Time I am going to get us going. Hello and welcome everyone. So it's really a pleasure to have you join us here today. For this YBSC City Council Candidate Sustainability Forum. It really is a pleasure to be able to gather with all of you here, both city council candidates and valued community partners and members. To collectively reflect upon how we can best define and address current and future sustainability challenges in our community. I am Michelle Stewart, the Executive Director of Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. And it's truly my privilege to be able to moderate this important and timely forum today. As many of you know, Yampa Valley Sustainability Council was established in 2009. And is guided by the mission to serve as a resource and catalyst for building a sustainable community in the Yampa Valley region. We at YBSC work in close partnerships with our government and community partners and members. To develop and implement sustainability related initiatives of impact. And thus recognize great value in hosting this forum. To give our council candidates the opportunity to clarify and state. How their approaches to sustainability and climate action distinguish their platforms. The recent adoption of the Route County Climate Action Plan makes this a particularly important time. For candidates to step forward to serve the community and ensure that the city leads by example. When it comes to implementing the Climate Action Plan and other related sustainability plans. Additionally, as mentioned, this year's Leadership Steamboat Cohort. Has identified climate change and sustainability as some of the most pressing issues our community is currently facing. Several members of which are in attendance today. In so many words, the time for climate action is now, and we look forward to hearing how our council candidates plan to lead accordingly. So before we get going, I will offer a few clarifications and guidelines for the discussion. There will be six questions posed during the forum today. With question one being the same for all candidates. Questions two through five will vary by district and at large. And question six will be the same for all candidates. Each candidate will only have two minutes to respond to the questions. There is going to be a hard stop to allow equal floor time for all candidates. So please forgive me in advance if I do have to move you along and or mute you. We really want to be time sensitive. You will see when we get going for the questions that there will be a two minute timer. Visible up in where you see kind of the big Brady Bunch gathering of images. And we will start the two minute timer when each candidate starts their responses. There will be a 30 second audible tone when there's 30 seconds, 30 seconds remaining. So candidates, when you hear that tone, please do be mindful of it and start wrapping up your points. The six questions that we will be asking live during the forum today have been selected from a range of. Questions that have been submitted to us by community members and partners. We regret not being able to ask all of the questions that were submitted to us today. But all submitted questions and those that attendees want to post today to the candidates via the chat. All of those questions will be sent to the candidates after the forum. And candidates are encouraged to respond to all those questions. As well as the questions that were posed to other districts or the at large group. And we will distribute candidate responses to all registered attendees by Friday. And will make them publicly available via our YBSC website and blog on Monday. Please note that the questions will be asked by different individuals. I will be consistently in charge of time and will stop candidates if you run over time. But those individuals who are asking the questions will be queuing candidates and prompting you to respond to questions in the order that we've. Set. We will be monitoring the chat and we at YBSC will remove any offensive or inappropriate comments should the need occur. We as a community are inclusive and respectful and will abide by these values and norms today. This forum will be recorded and made available to all registered attendees and the public via YouTube. For more information on accessing the forum recording, please check our website and social media. We also have the pleasure of having Steamboat Pilot here with us today. So keep in mind that all comments chats and responses are publicly accessible information. And as usual, please keep your microphones muted when you're not speaking. And without further ado, let's get going, get going around this great discussion. So I will start us off on our first question. And as a reminder, this first question is for all candidates. So in the order, we will start with at large. And then we will go to District three, District two, and then District one. And again, I'll queue you in for order. But for the first respondents, we'll have Dave Maloney and then Eddie Breones. The first question being. In relation to the now city adopted Route County Climate Action Plan. What do you see as the city's role in one, making sure that the Climate Action Plan is implemented? And two, some specific first steps that can be taken to ensure that we meet our emissions reductions goals. So I welcome David Maloney. Dave, are you on here? Okay, we're going to get moved to Eddie Breones.
Hi, Michelle, how's it going? Hello, everyone. Answer to the question number one here. I see the city's role as leading in charge for implementing the Climate Action Plan. Steamboat Springs should be the example for Route County and the entire Yampa Valley. We need to open communication, partner and collaborate with all our neighboring towns and counties within the Yampa River Basin. Yampa, Phippsburg, Oak Creek, Milner, Hayden Craig, Maybelle and Dinosaur. Yeah, all those, right? Forming these partnerships is vital to protecting and preserving the Yampa Valley's rivers, creeks, lakes and forests. So that they can be accessible and enjoyable for future generations. I feel that the first steps that the city can take to achieve and meet our mission reduction goal. Is to pursue federal grants and fund alternative energy sources to power our city buildings. The city buildings were one of the higher. Causes of GHGs in our valley here. Due to electric production and heat. Partner with the Yampa Valley Electric to improve on the power grid and infrastructure. And already expand on their alternative energy program. Maybe even explore geothermal methods. I mean, we have a lot of hot springs. I would assume we have a lot of hot springs in town, so. Why not tap into those to help heat our buildings? The technology is only getting better and cheaper, so we need to take advantage of that. And exploring and utilizing other forms of energy and resources to heat our buildings. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And do we have Dave Maloney on yet? Okay, so we are going to move along to District three Dakota.
Hey, everyone. I believe it's the cities, the role of the city council to protect the health and safety of our community. The city can work directly with the Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. And or hire a sustainability manager for the city. That keeps track of the progress and aligns with other initiatives to work on goals together such as childcare, affordable housing. And climate initiative projects. Securing sustainable funding is the first step diverting the destination marketing funds. To support destination management and cap action. Placing a fee on short term rentals that works for implementing lead policy development. And compact, compact development for affordable housing. And a few specifics. I think switching all city building to lead development and renewable energy and incentivizing residential and commercial, commercial renewable energy. Reducing vehicle miles traveled by implementing carpool and transit incentives and electrifying the city fleet's waste. Diversion, we have a local composting business innovative for generations feed for seed. That the city can better support. By advertising and educating the community for recycling, we can follow Summit's lead by offering various sized. Bins, so the less you produce, the less you spend. Reducing the waste streams that enter. I will move along. We need to develop a community plan for clean renewable energy. My role as a council member is in policy change, education and incentives. Designing and planning our community systems to be sustainable, energy efficient and water wise. Will ensure future generations have the ability to tackle their resource and spatial challenges. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Walter McGill.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me today. You know, the Climate Action Plan is a well written document that provides strategies, actions and tactics for both Route County and the city of Steamboat Springs to successfully. Implement the plan. In addition, the rankings there are excellent. You know, it has priority and complexity of each action, so. That's helpful. I think my role in the city council will be to work with the council collaboratively and our supporters to implement the actions and tactics to make the plan successful. From my work as a professional engineer, land planner and land surveyor, working with the Community Development Code of the city of Steamboat Springs. There's several areas of the code I believe can be modified to create land use strategies for the information of climate action policy. And the city recently updated the entry corridor landscape standards. And you know, I think they knew what they were doing. They thought landscaping would be great, but it now requires six times the amount of trees to be planted and grown for one year. There's not a lot of follow up on these trees, but it sure takes a lot of irrigation. You know, these areas are currently voided trees and then basically they're looking at a. You know, almost a forest in front of some of these buildings. The requirements, as I said, take too much irrigation maintenance. The code could be incentivized to reduce parking requirements for projects on transit. We already have a 10% reduction. And required parking for projects near transit. But increasing that even more as well as incentivizing, you know, for solar arrays because many projects start with. Parking spaces first and then whatever. I think we should encourage more community housing projects such as River Place and Butcher Knife Creek. There's only two that have been done, but they've both been very successful where the. Parking is outside the building. People are walking towards their homes and you know, they match it with snow removal and things like that, so. It's kind of collaboration and that's the goal here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Daniel Gurkey.
Thank you. I think the roles of the city for. Is more of a sponsor with the Climate Action Plan. Sponsor provides the resources. Proves the scope of the work that is taken on by our city resources and ensure we are setting policy that focuses on sustainability. Quality of life, access to transportation. And creating opportunities for employment as well as conservation of resources, reducing waste and creating incentives or disincentives to make the city greener and reduce our impact on the environment. First steps that be taken to reduce our emissions reduction would be set up policy regarding permitting of new buildings and offering incentives for developers that are creating green buildings. The city should ensure that pulling as many grants as they can to assist with the cost of building, energy efficient buildings that don't rely on fossil fuels to run. The city should also continue to move forward with the electric vehicle charging stations throughout the community. We should also work closely with the county to talk about where we can put other EV chargers throughout the county. Obviously, when the car fleets start needing repair or replacement, we should be looking at any opportunity there to replace those vehicles with either electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles. To reduce our greenhouse gas production. Unfortunately, as we all know, not all vehicles in the city have the option to be replaced with EV or hybrid vehicles, but as technology approves, we should be able to replace other vehicles over time. I think we should also work with the largest uses of power and wastewater to get them on board and make them leaders of in making our city green. I also really liked what Yampa Valley Sustainability Council did with the tree planting. I wish I wasn't on vacation because I would have come out and helped on that, but I was out of town for that. The last thing here is really climate change is real and we need to stay diligent in how we approach reducing our impact to the environment. And this requires us to continually work with the community and educate them on how to be more green by making them aware of the various things they can do to limit their impact. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next we have Stephen Randall.
Hello, everybody. And while we have no control over the natural variability of climate. We do have control over the human causes by the burning of fossil fuels, deforestation and poor agricultural processes. I believe the city's role is to provide leadership and power. Specifically, develop a regional transportation system. Two, let's install supplemental solar on all city buildings. Let's move in all electric city vehicles. Let's zero escape all of our city property. We need to quit watering our lawns and also the installation of. Eliminate solo automobile trips. And that's.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Okay, next we will move to District two candidates, starting with Joella West.
The Climate Action Plan addresses a wide range of issues. And proposed strategies and tactics for consideration at all levels. As you know, if you've read it, and I'm assuming that if you're watching this forum, you probably have. The prioritizing is left for us all to determine. So I would say that the first task for the city is to identify strategies. That are most important to our community and tactics that can be implemented now or need to be initiated now because now is when the future begins. But the city can't do it alone, nor can Route County. As in any number of important issues that have been identified in this race. We have to join together as partners to implement the cap. That will mean a long term working relationship between the council and the commissioners. A clear identification of those areas in which the city plays the larger role. And a commitment to fund initiatives in some reasonable proportion to the city's responsibility and ability to make a real difference. First steps can be those issues where we can make an immediate and obvious impact. Trails and local buses can do that. And making visible progress on these goals will encourage our community. To pursue the longer and more challenging strategies. Where we need to take first steps now, even though they will take years to show measurable impact. For example, EV readiness, regional transit authority. I'd like to see the city commit to both pathways. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Blair Picard.
Okay, sorry, can you hear me? I had to get unmuted.
We've got you.
Great, thank you. First, just a disclaimer. Excuse any of my remarks that I might state something the city's already doing. I spent half an hour this morning trying to find out what the city does on permeable paving and never really did find an answer, so. The city's role, I think, number one is to lead. Take actions right now to start meeting and exceeding our goals within the context of the CAP. And to me, that means starting with the bigs, transportation emissions and residential and commercial emissions, mostly via heating and AC. Publicize, we have to get buy in. You know, we need to publicize and tell our constituents why. That there may be a certain amount of griping, no doubt, on some of our actions. You know, people won't take to all these changes well. But we have to make it clear from the outset on the whys and the hows. And then thanking at every step of the way, thank and congratulate. You know, at bus stops, we should have thank you signs for taking the bus and on the bus, you saved a quarter of a gallon. You know, biking and walking pass, things like that. It's interesting, there's a huge body of research that thanking in advance encourages and increases the desired. Behavior but by huge increments. We also must work hand in hand with Route County. It's their cap after all. First steps. Paid parking downtown and at Ski Mountain. We want people to walk, ride bikes, take the bus, double up. Avoid extra trips. Improve and expand city trails, launch a companion to walk first, bike second, rideshare third. Delivery programs from all stores. And already in the works, Brown Ranch, follow best practices. High density within reason and lots of open space trail and walking and bus routing and infrastructures. Have stores out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blair. Sorry to stop you. And next we have Louis Antonucci.
Hi, all. Thanks for having us. Thanks for all the work you do. So the first thing I think the city needs to take the lead. With the cap plan and I believe that they need to lead by example. Second thing, I think that they should be the leader in the collaboration. And I think, and that's with all the stakeholders, including Route County, the school district, Ski Corps, Yampa Valley Electric. You know, the ways the city can do that obviously is with public meetings, work sessions, also with public outreach. The first steps. We know that a large part of our energy uses in the greenhouse glass gases come from homes and buildings. So the first thing the city should do is review our community development code and try to incentivize renewable energy sources. Next thing we could do is, and it's already been said, but I think every time we go to look at replacing vehicles. Anything that we can do with either hybrid or EVs, we should be doing. You know, buses and trucks are coming out with hydrogen type of technology. And even though there's not a lot of that available right now, over the course of the next four or five years, we're going to see more and more of that and prices will come down. On a macro level, we need to work with Route County to adopt the community plan that ships used renewable energy resources. And my number one thing is get the kids to take the school buses instead of being dropped off and picked up. And get the high school kids not to drive to school. So I got.
All right, great. Thank you very much. And now we'll move to District one candidates, starting Gail Gary.
There we go, found the move button. So thank you, Michelle. My name is Gail Gary. And I'm a, you know, I'm a longtime supporter of the environment and a longtime supporter of the Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. You know, I've certainly volunteered at a lot of the hard to recycle events. You know, I've staffed the zero waste stations. I've even dug through trash for waste audits and I currently serve on the Yampa Valley Sustainability Board. You know, one of the main reasons that I'm running is because, you know, the environmental champions that are currently on council are stepping down. And as Michelle said, you know, this is a decisive decade. You know, with each day that passes, the task before us grows exponentially. The adoption of the Climate Action Plan, you know, by the city and by the county and the surrounding communities certainly provides a clear roadmap. For what we need to do to reduce greenhouse gases and to mitigate the most devastating impacts of climate change. And certainly, you know, the governmental entities are making progress in terms of setting up that oversight committee that we're going to need to work through this. But we don't need to wait. I mean, as the city can lead by example. You know, reducing greenhouse gases and building resiliency, it needs to be. Integrated into each decision that the city makes. The actions need to be funded and each of the departments need to be held accountable. Vehicle emissions, you know, account for 26% of the greenhouse gas emissions. You know, transitioning the city fleet to electric vehicles as each of the assets are retired will certainly move us in the direction of reducing vehicle emissions. You know, the city has also demonstrated its commitment. To increasing renewable resources through its partnerships, you know, to install solar at the various facilities. You know, if I'm on council, I would certainly work to create and prioritize locally generated renewable energy. And then finally, you know, I serve as Chair of the Organics Task Force, you know, which supported the effort to bring composting to the community. Making that more affordable and accessible is an easy way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next we have Dave Baldinger.
Hi there. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dave and I grew up here in Steamboat. I'm a lifelong resident. I attended Dartmouth College and I studied environmental science, so. Some of the things we're talking about today, I've been thinking about for many years. I hate to say how many years, but over 30. And I think sustainability and implementation of the Climate Action Plan is really important and the city is going to be an important partner. With all the other entities mentioned. In achieving the goals and objectives. And trying to answer this question, you know, I tried to narrow down to specifics. But really, I think all six sectors are equally important, you know, energy, transportation, waste, land use, accountability, they're all important. I think the first steps the city should take are probably in transportation. We need to improve and promote multimodal access. We need to work, as Eddie said, you know, and partner with YVEA if we're going to. Make a transition to EV vehicles. We've got a lot of infrastructure work at a high cost, so we're going to have to really get after that. I think low hanging fruit is in the waste sector. We really need to promote reduction of solid waste and as Gail said. You know, composting is a really good way. To get a fresh start right away. And I agree with her that, you know, the time is now. I also think the accountability sector is going to be important where, you know, the government has to step in. And make sure we're following the markers and establishing the priorities that are most important. You know, to reduce gases as soon as possible. So. Again, all six sectors, I like what I heard from the other candidates and I'm really committed to the Climate Action Plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now we'll move to the second question.
Hello there. Can you hear me? Okay, my name's Ariante Stetner and I am asking this question on behalf of. Partners in Preservation, which is an advocacy group. With members from historic Route County, Detroit Pioneers Museum and the preservation community. So I will first ask David to answer and then followed by Gail. And here is the question. The greenest building is the one already built is a quote that best describes how preservation and sustainability go hand in hand. Multiple state and national studies show that building reuse. Could creates more and better paying jobs than new construction. And that rehabilitation projects keep more dollars circulating in the local economy. These studies also show that projects. Take from 10 to 80 years for a new building 30% more efficient. Than an average performing existing building to overcome the negative climate change impacts. Related to the construction project process. So, given that preserving older buildings is a key component to creating unique and attractive communities. And to addressing climate change. How do you think Steamboat Springs is doing in terms of saving our existing buildings? And how might we do better? So David, you're on first, please.
Thanks, Ariante. This is actually the most fun question that I've got the whole campaign. I was really excited. I wish I had more than two minutes. But I think there's a, this is a really good example about how the. City boards and commissions can work together to a common goal. And, you know, the way this question was stated is perfect, you know. Environmental sustainability is in lockstep with historic preservation, which is in lockstep with really cool houses and especially in our district and District one. It just kills me every time I see a house torn down and somebody goes maximum lot line and builds a new house. It's just wasteful and ridiculous. So I think all those boards and commissions need to take a look at the code. Encourage flexibility in zoning so that people can maintain the historic integrity of the main structures. While at the same time being allowed to do remodels. And I think another part is public awareness. You know, historic Route County, the Historic Preservation Commission. They're great resources that the council needs to use better. To let people know that remodeling a house can be fun, it can be efficient. There are fantastic, you know, windows and roof systems that you can make a house, you know, maintain its historic integrity. While at the same time bringing it up to date in terms of efficiency. So I think awareness is key on this issue and I really hope that all those entities can work together. To preserve historic structures. One example in the commercial and residential space that I really think is a great example is the Yampa Valley Electric Building. I just love how that was repurposed. It's in full use. It's more valuable than before it was remodeled. And I'd like to see more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Gail, you're up now, so. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Steamboat Springs and Route County are certainly rich in culture, history and Western heritage. You know, the history of our community, our historic resources, our community landscapes, our green landscapes are all irreplaceable assets and. A clear way to distinguish our community from other mountain towns. You know, I see historic preservation and sustainability as natural partners. You know, the preservation and reuse of historic buildings, you know, as has been said, certainly minimizes our carbon footprint by reducing the consumption of resources. And by putting less waste, you know, in the landfill. Construction of new buildings certainly consumes enormous amounts of resources. You know, in Route County, commercial and residential buildings represent about 52% of the greenhouse gas emissions. And I think there are opportunities to expand the partnerships between the city, the Yampa Valley Sustainability Council and YVEA. To expand, you know, the energy audit programs and to encourage and help facilitate the retrofitting. Of the commercial buildings downtown in order to provide kind of more energy efficient upgrades. You know, I think there's also an opportunity to prioritize the consideration of green landscapes. You know, like historic buildings and districts, you know, these green landscapes, you know, provide a lot of insights into our community's origins and our development. You know, green landscapes also reveal a lot about our evolving relationship with the natural environment. You know, preservation of open spaces, the green spaces and mature trees. Not only, you know, maintain the culture and character of our community, but they also make us a more environmentally sustainable community. And while I'm certainly not an expert in, you know, historic preservation and the retrofitting of, you know, historic buildings. I would absolutely look to the Historic Preservation Commission and the rest of the community for their expertise and guidance on how to move forward. on how to move forward and to identify where there are gaps in the planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tim Sullivan, the Natural Climate Solutions Director for the Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. And I have a question for the District Two candidates. And the question is, what are the top actions the city should be investing in for climate adaptation as opposed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions in order to prepare for current and projected changes? And I will start with Louis Antiducci.
Thanks, Tim. So, you know, I'll go back. I think that one of the biggest ways the city, the first thing they should do is look at the municipal code, their building code. Obviously, I mean, let's just look at water, for instance. I mean, if you look at pictures of Steamboat Springs back around the turn of the century, the only trees that were grown were really along the Yampa River where there was water. And the building, the planning department requires an enormous amount of trees and grasses that consume an awful lot of water. So I think the first thing we should do is invest money in looking at that code. It's probably the path of least resistance. I think the next thing the city could do is do public outreach and education, also leading by example. I think that the existing buildings that we have, any time that they need to be repaired or, you know, new HVAC systems, which, you know, inevitably need to be replaced. I think that they need to be looked at and to provide, you know, sustainable energy sources. And then any new construction, I think it should be integrated into the construction. Now, the other thing, as I said before, is anytime we look at vehicle replacement, I think we need to be looking at, you know, EVs and, you know, whatever else is more efficient than what we're using. And then just basically follow up best practices type of philosophy.
Thank you. Next up, we have Blair.
Blair, you muted. Okay, yeah, I lost my place again, sorry. You know, I was saying, I think our big chance is Brown Ranch. You know, it's hard to go back and undo what's been done in the city and, you know, there's gonna be big growth out there in the next 10 years. And, you know, we really need to study what works. And, you know, what works is, you know, revising codes to promote best practices and energy conservation, heating and cooling efficiency. You know, we should also institute a fee structure for bigger, biggest, and ultra-big new buildings. You know, I don't, I, commercial and residential. I don't have anything personally against trophy houses, but, you know, they are energy hogs. There's a lot of energy that goes into that and we need to take a look at, you know, regulating that sort of thing. You know, in addition, I think, you know, we have to work with the county and the other municipalities in this one. You know, climate change, it doesn't have any boundaries. We need to see where incremental improvements will come the easiest and the cheapest. You know, if commercial emissions are the low hanging fruit in Steamboat, all right, let's jump on that. If in Elk Creek and Hayden, it's, you know, people driving around, jump on that. I think that's something that, you know, can do both Steamboat and the rest of the county a lot of good that, you know, we really haven't examined. You know, finally, we need to invest in things that will, you know, decrease our energy consumption net. And to me, that spells, you know, improving the bus system. Lots of ways to do that, but I think that, I mentioned parking fees earlier, exempt residents for certain, but use those proceeds to get a good bus system moving forward.
Thank you. And finally, we have Joelle.
Let's look at a couple of the biggest topics, drought and fire. We can't make drought disappear and we need to do whatever we can as a city to mitigate the effects of drought on agriculture, which is the heritage of Yampa Valley. In addition to cooperating with the county, we need to continue to take action on the issues where the city can act alone and make a difference. Let's make sure that our building codes incorporate best practices in water economy for residential and commercial construction and remodels. And perhaps most importantly, for the city's own properties, both because of their impact and their ability to model what we want everywhere in Steamboat. Since we all anticipate that the Brown Ranch property will at some point be annexed, we need to work with the county to make sure that this development will in every way include the best water conservation practices. We should be utilizing gray water, but as of now, my understanding is that the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has again delayed action on this. The city watering limitations that have been imposed as a response to a declared drought should become the norm. Residents should be encouraged to use catch basins and drip systems and to minimize or find alternatives to lawns. Bravo to the city for installing a water-wise planting in front of City Hall. Steamboat Springs Fire Rescue protects not only the city boundaries, but also the surrounding fire protection district. We should consider everything to make our fire department prepared to fight a wildland urban interface fire. I fear for that for our city and I support everything that the department will require to handle that problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Sarah Jones. I am on the board of the YVSC and I'm also their Director of Sustainability and Community Engagement for the Steamboat Springs Resort Corporation. My question is for District Three. And we'll start with Stephen. What do you think destination management ought to mean for the city of Steamboat Springs? And what three key initiatives or priorities would you want to see in a destination management plan? Stephen, we'll start with you.
I was kind of scratching my head on this. Putting the marketing hat on. To me, destination management calls for the coalition of many organizations and interests working toward a common goal, ultimately being some competitiveness and sustainability of the tourist destination. How we incorporate the ideas and goals of CAC. To tell you the truth, I'm really not sure. I think it's something best left to, and I came up with partnering with maybe the Chamber of Commerce, but also the reason for common message, primarily promoting transportation system, or bike paths, or foot paths, basically our multimodal transportation system and accessibility.
Thank you. Daniel?
Thank you. I think destination management should be viewed holistically because it's more than just the sum of its parts. What I'd like to see is, if we haven't already done this, is for us to hire a consultant that specializes in destination management, planning, and implementation. The destination management strategy should not only address critical hardware such as transportation, but it should also address what is needed to foster our quality of life, culture, experiences, impact to our environment, and ensuring we are creating a management plan that focuses on conservation and sustainability of our resources. To start drafting the destination management plan, we should break it down into six phases. Foundational research, visioning workshops or community workshops, draft recommendations, finalize those recommendations, and clearly call out roles and responsibilities. Then work through implementation and then development of an ongoing action plan. Successful foundational research should be conducted in a manner that requires participation of industry stakeholders such as Skeeco and other local businesses, as well as local community and visitor as well. To do this, we should conduct a visitor survey, destination assessment, and a community survey so we can collect data and use this to start a process for developing recommendations in our action plan. For example, destination assessments should focus on gathering quantitative data of Steamboat's assets and experiences by utilizing social media like Yelp, TripAdvisor, and other sites to gather data to determine the performance of Steamboat's destinations and the visitor experience so baseline can be set so we can measure performance of our destination management strategy. It also has the following objectives in our plan. Resident quality of life, visitor experience, investments such as infrastructure updates, transportation, multimodal transportation, et cetera, employment, environment, this should focus on embracing the vision of sustainability tourism and sustainability development. Our goal should be to become an example for other cities on how to be a sustainable community and a world-class tourism destination. Our strategies should focus on attracting visitors in the off-season, attracting visitors to less frequent destinations, increase visitor spending, manage peak season with visitors. If we spend time upfront collecting and analyzing data, then we should be able to develop a plan that works well for our community and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Walter, you're up.
Thanks for the question. Destination management, well, it's a big aspect. We have so many events in Steamboat Springs, both in summer and winter. I want to make sure that the guests and the planners for events in Steamboats are aware and knowledgeable of what's expected for events in the city of Steamboat Springs. And so part of that is what already happens. We have a lot of good events that do, are sustainable events, pre-concert series. What stands out to me is the Wintergrass Music Festival is outstanding. This event has hired, you know, extra buses for trips downtown for their guests. They've used souvenir reusable cups and they've encouraged guests to ride transit when they come here so they're not renting cars. I think that's the same thing with a lot of, you know, a lot, we have a good lot of resort partners that do a good, well, do well with that as well. Acasa and stuff, they pick guests up at the airport when they come in. People don't have cars all week, they learn the transit system. So I am for the transit system as it stands right now, but I think the three key items for destination management are being sure that planning events, when we're doing them either through our special event funding through the Steamboat Springs Chamber, or ongoing events such as rodeo, the running series, and other events are all doing things that meet the Climate Action Plan as far as waste management. So the city is imperative that they ask those questions as they're using community service officers and they're giving licensing to these events. So I think that's the items that I'd like to see the city continue with, with. Thanks.
Thanks, Walter. And Dakota, you're up last.
All right, thank you, Sarah. I'd like to see destination management offer visitor orientation and a welcome packet that informs visitors of the things they can, that they need to understand about our town. So number one, bear bins are there to save bear lives and keep everyone safe and healthy. If they can't figure out the lock system, there needs to be a number to call for assistance. I also believe there needs to be cameras with actual enforcement. Someone is responsible for improperly disposing waste that creates wildlife issues. They should pay for a fee that will help fund the enforcement efforts. Number two, the river is our most vital resource. So visitors must understand the devastating effects of pollution and misuse. Number three, providing visitors with a map of the city's walking paths and bus routes and a schedule with a number to call with any questions would help reduce some traffic. I think destination management also has an opportunity to connect visitors with nonprofits to volunteer. This would help visitors integrate into our community by understanding our needs and efforts. It could be incentives for visitors who participate and ride the bus when possible to receive chamber bucks. These efforts on their part will increase the visitor's sense of connectedness to the land and community and increase their sense of responsibility. This is our home and this is what we expect from you when visiting our home. I'd also like to find creative ideas for how the city can offer visitors a way to counter their emissions of traveling to town, maybe by planting trees and getting involved locally by supporting Community Agriculture Alliance and other local initiatives. Those are just some of my ideas. Thank you.
Thanks, Dakota.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wynne Cowman and I am the Waste Diversion Director for YVSC. My question is for the at-large candidates, Eddie and Dave. And Eddie, you will answer first, followed by Dave. My question is, currently, our local waste diversion rate averages around 10 to 12%, meaning 88 to 90% of materials that we generate are landfillled, approximately three-fourth of which can be recycled or reused, according to a 2018 Northwest Colorado study, Waste Diversion Study. What do you think we can attribute these low diversion rates to? And what three strategies would you prioritize to increase diversion in order to achieve the Climate Action Plan target of 46% by 2030? So Eddie, can you answer first, please?
Thanks, Wynne. I think that the low diversion rates around County and Steamboat Springs are basically attributed to lack of public knowledge for both locals and visitors. Also, the lack of facilities to process food waste, which is the single largest material that's going to waste. We used to have a composting program with, I believe it was Twin Enviro Services, but they no longer do that. So I think implementing some kind of program and re-implementing that program would be a great start. Using city council as a role to inform the locals and then having the Steamboat Springs Chamber implement their program of destination management would be great to inform the visitors. Cost and access to recycling, I mean, right now, most of the waste management or the waste services only recycle and pick up recycling in town. As far as the county is concerned, they don't do that. So people have to come in and drive their recycling to these different recycling places. That's kind of a pain in the butt for some folks. So yeah, I think that has a lot to attribute to our low diversion percentage. Three strategies that are prioritized is, again, educating and informing the public and locals. Explore possibly building a facility for composting and recycling, some kind of a community center for that. And partner with other towns and counties. I know a lot of other towns and counties within the area are hauling their recycling to centers in Denver and I think down in Grand Junction or Eagle or something like that. So I think this week, we can start with stuff like that. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Eddie. And Dave, you're up next.
And I don't think Dave has joined yet, so that's it. So thank you, Eddie, for your representation of at-large. So we can go on to the sixth question.
Great, my name is Madison Muxworthy. I'm the Soil, Moisture, Water, and Snow Program Manager at Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. My next question is for all of the candidates. So we'll start with District One, District Two, and District Three, and then we'll go to that large candidates. So the question is, agriculture is a large water right holder in the Yampa Basin and a rich part of our cultural heritage in the city of Steamboat Springs. The annual volume of flow in the Yampa River has declined from approximately 1.5 million acre feet annually a century ago to 1.1 million acre feet today. Research is pointing towards further decreases with climate change coupled with an increase in demand for water. First, what do you believe should be a top focus for increasing water conservation in the city? And two, how can the city collaborate with all water users to promote sustainable management of our water resources? And we will start with David.
Thanks, Madison. I agree that water conservation is an important component of our kind of long-term future. I mean, the Yampa Valley is obviously the jewel, our main vein of water running through the community that's used for, you know, recreational uses and just general natural beauty. The good news as a community in researching this issue is that since 2007, our population has increased pretty significantly and our demand for treated water has gone down. So that's a good trend where we've gotten a head start and I think we need to continue on that trend. I think the top focus for water conservation is implementing the 2020 Water Conservation Plan adopted by the city of Steamboat and the Mount Warner districts. If you haven't read the document, it's a great 80 to 100-page document. It's very specific. It has a goal of reducing water consumption by approximately 10% over 10 years as a target goal. Hopefully, we could do even better than that. And I think a big part of that plan is educating the community on best practices, leading by example on city properties, parks, and right-of-way. That's a big way to kind of show the community how water conservation is not difficult if you're well-educated. That's a big way to kind of show the community how water conservation is not difficult if you're well-educated and it's not particularly more expensive. I think we also need to reevaluate the CDC, the Community Development Code, because landscape requirements are too intense and too water-intensive. We also need to be aggressive with rebates and awareness to encourage retrofit to washers, toilets, dishwashers in the next 10 years. And there's a large section in the plan about that. And finally, I think we need to work with the biggest six water users in the city and help them because that alone could help attack 10% of water usage currently. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we will have Gail.
Thank you, Madison. You know, the time is now to implement waters, you know, strategies that build resiliency in our water use practices and help us learn to live with less water. The sustainable management of water resources through water conservation and land use planning are components to maintaining a well-balanced community in a semi-arid climate. You know, I think the city has a key role to play in both the water quality and water quantity. You know, by ensuring that water conservation and quality through the management of our watershed. You know, city staff has already done a lot of work with the creation and the adoption of the 2020 Water Conservation Plan. You know, the plan looks to preserve the health of Fish Creek as well as the Yampa River and to protect drinking water supplies while reducing the overall carbon footprint of the Yampa Valley. You know, as noted, the plan does set forth the goal to reduce household usage by 10% in 10 years. And I think city council needs to support those efforts and all of the actions that are going to be necessary to meet this goal as well as hold staff accountable for meeting this goal as well as the other goals that are set forth in the plan. I think a great example of collaboration amongst all the stakeholders is also the Yampa River Health Assessment and Stream Flow Management Plan. You know, warming air temperatures, changing precipitation patterns and increasing demand for water from the Yampa River are threatening, you know, our most valued resource here in the community. You know, the management plan identifies a long-term strategy for protecting and improving the health and the resilience of the Yampa River. And again, it's council's role, in my opinion, to support the initiatives that are set forth in the plan and holding staff accountable to meeting those goals. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon. You know, I am Gail Gary and I'm, you know, running to ensure that there is an environmental voice on council. And, you know, if elected, implementation and funding of the Climate Action Plan and the plans that we just talked about is certainly one of my top priorities. So thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Next, we'll have Louis.
Hey, thanks all. Well, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I certainly, well, with water usage, there's basically two types of usage. One is the consumptive part that doesn't flow back in. And then the other part is the stuff that flows through the pipes into the sewage treatment plant and back into the, the, the Yampa River. So the thing that we need to be focused on is the consumptive part. And I'll go back to what I have said previously in, with the other questions is that a lot of it goes into the way that the city writes the codes, especially, you know, the landscape plans and the water that, you know, is treated water unfortunately that we use to water lawns and trees and everything else that, you know, goes into the soil is, is not recycled, you know, back into the system. I think the city also needs to lead by example. And I think that, that the conservation measures in the, in the public buildings is going to allow people to, to basically mirror what the city does. And then obviously outreach programs, education programs. The city landscape, you know, we had a problem this summer with the median strips. And maybe those need to be revisited and maybe we need to put things at a more zero scape type landscape. So we don't use as much water. And then the, and then obviously implementing the conservation plan. That's all for me.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we will have Blair.
Thank you. You know, with water, we've kind of got two issues, I think. The one, we've all touched upon, you know, conservation and then something that hasn't been addressed too much, I think, in our community is runoff. I'll start with conservation. Steve, thanks for pronouncing zero escaping earlier. I had no idea how to pronounce it, but I know what it means. We should require water efficient landscaping and all new construction and in any kind of, you know, rehab projects for property owners and put it on a five to 10-year horizon with appropriate plants. We should have a goal of reducing turf, both in the existing stock of turf by 25% in the next 10 years and continue our, you know, tree planting efforts. We, we need to consider, I'll call it tightening up, that's a polite word, our water and sewer rates. I'm an economist and I deal with financial incentives and disincentives and we've done a great job of reducing consumption per capita, but we can do better. And if we need to, we should consider changing our rates. We should post a 10 ways to conserve water in every short-term rental and every public restroom and hotels, et cetera. Then we need to better address urban runoff, biggest source of water pollution in our city. I talked about permeable parking. We can reduce the size of lots. We don't have to make them for capacity max. We can have green roofs in Brown Ranch. We can look at, you know, narrower streets, believe it or not, they work. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we will have Jala.
Even if we as a city do everything reasonably possible, the greatest burden will still fall on the ranchers and farmers of the Yampa Valley. As I said in response to the District Two question, the city can and should continue to do everything possible to minimize water use within its boundaries and to follow the Water Conservation Plan. I also support making sure that the city continues to protect the riparian corridor and to follow the recommended actions in the Yampa River Stream Management Plan. As some of you know, I've been on the Executive Committee of the Community Ag Alliance Board for a number of years. And one of our biggest missions is water. We promote water education and awareness and cooperation among water interest groups in the Yampa White Green Basin. Two months ago, the Ag Alliance led state and local leaders on the route county portion of the drought impact tour. I look forward to staying on the board if I'm elected to council. And in that role, I will be a liaison for information exchange and action planning. If you aren't already familiar with what the Ag Alliance does for water issues, I'm going to take my last few seconds and encourage you all to go to communityagalliance.org to find out more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen.
This is muted here. I believe that the Yampa River is the crown jewel of our city. Anybody's ever seen my campaign card? You know, it's a picture of me actually fishing on the Yampa River, holding a beautiful fish. That said, this question really opens up a hornet's nest. It scared my heart. Our overall policy is better management of water rights. 40% of agriculture usage is for non-food production. I don't know if that's something that we can really hack at the city level, but let's get on something that we can solve. At the city level, we can make some headway, number one, as I've said before. Let's zero scape our city properties. Let's stop watering our lawns. Implement and enforce draft imposed water restrictions. Let's reduce water usage for all non-food agriculture. And then one thing that nobody's really brought up is let's work with our local utility and encourage the maintenance and upgrading of our system. We waste a tremendous amount of water through old systems, leakage. But I think the other, we just started at the base level here in the city. Appreciate your time. I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Daniel.
Thank you. My first exposure to water rights, environmentalism and just conservation was 30-plus years ago when I was a boy scout. And I have been worried about it ever since. So I think one of the things that's a big thing that the city can do is make, focus on education, increase awareness about water scarcity within our city and work and coordinate our education program and share that county-wide. It's little things that we can do. I remember learning this when we were much younger, when we had folks coming in from the Forest Service telling us, "How do you brush your teeth?" And we're like, "We turn the water on, we brush our teeth." And they tell us, "Well, maybe you should turn the water off while you're brushing our teeth." So there are simple little things that we can get our kids doing, adults doing. So we really should be focusing on those low-hanging fruit pieces first. Next, obviously want to continue to invest in any kind of innovative technologies, code so that if people are building their houses to be more efficient, that we allow that to go through the process and potentially provide some incentives for that as well. We also need to work with the agricultural users to find ways to make their irrigation more efficient. What do they need from us to become more water-conservative? The city can also continue to focus on improving their infrastructure as it relates to water. And then working with people to ensure like, you know, restaurants that have to have their grease traps so that that's not going in the water. Just looking at the different businesses, what do they have available to reduce water pollution? You know, obviously, continue to encourage water preservation. For the CAP, we should also continue to develop and deepen collaboration between land management, forest health and watershed management groups. And then enact codes and policies to protect wetland streams and other waterways. We should always look for ways to incentivize the various user groups to conserve water, protect our waterways. If elected, I can promise you that I will be a big advocate for the CAP plan. I think it's very important to our city and our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Walter.
Thanks. Yeah, the water issue, it's, as we all know, we're in drought every year. And so stated by others, you know, the water restrictions in Mount Warner District as well as the city district need to be year-round and enforcement of such restrictions. You see a lot going on when you're around town in the mornings that people are watering every day on certain properties. And enforcement's a big part of that. Certainly, we get the profit from them, from selling them the water, transport, but we don't, we're wasting our water. So as I stated earlier, you know, the entry corridor landscaping standards, they were just approved two years ago, but I don't think they took water conservation into effect. The number of trees required, as I said, is six times what it used to be. Trees provide shade and reduce carbon emissions. However, these type trees, you know, there's not much follow-up on the growth. So it's kind of a landscaping play that doesn't go fruition because not all the trees develop over time. The turf fields have been good for the high school. They've done it in the middle school and what we've done there with turf fields. Other field work, if we're not going to down at Emerald, when you look down, you see four ball fields and then the city council says, "We're not going to allow ball playing on our fields." Well, then are we in the right direction? Protection of the river, it's been stated here as well, but as a river, as a resource and limiting the tubing further. Nobody appreciates it. It doesn't go on that long. And, you know, for our guests, they enjoy it, but it does trash the river. So I think we need to continue to protect the river resource that we have flowing through our community. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dakota.
Thanks, Madison. My sustainability degree has deepened my appreciation for water as a limited resource. The county has received grant funding to implement agriculture technology to reduce the amount of water loss and evaporation as well as provide education resources for farmers to learn more regenerative agriculture practices. I think the city can take on this responsibility too within our parks. Like these other people have said, planting water-wise native species and reducing the amount of grass and heavy water using plants. The city can also promote education and awareness for household and commercial water use. From a farming background, I understand how much pressure is on farmers to reduce their use and still produce. That same pressure is not applied to golf courses, commercial or residential zones in the city and county. We all need to be a part of the path toward water security in the valley. Even though farmers hold a large portion of the water rights in the valley, they aren't guaranteed water in a drier year. If we are in a dry year, we all need to reduce our usage. Every industry, business and individual, we are no longer a drought state, but a state facing permanent aridification. The sooner our city can adapt our local systems and parks to be as water-efficient as possible, the better chances future generations will have to meet their water needs. The Water Conservation Plan can be built out to include the entire city with more support. The city can partner with schools and local businesses to reduce water use and increase awareness of water as an infinite, sorry, as a finite resource required for healthy, thriving ecosystems and populations. As a council member, I can look at current policies to incentivize green building. You know, we all need to act wisely to see how our community can grow in the right direction. Thank you for tuning in.
Thank you. Next, we will have Eddie.
Okay, this question brings a little bit closer to the heart and for me, because as being an employee of the Mount Warner Water District, we're dealing with this pretty much every day. I think the city should focus on restricting or enforcing and having stricter rules for, for lawn irrigation and, and water waste during the summer and maybe all year-round. Every day I drive around and I see folks just watering the lawn on, on the day that they're not supposed to or times they're not supposed to. So educating the, the community as well as when they're supposed to water the lawn is a big step. People should know what the watering restriction rules are. Another focus should be identifying water loss through leaking infrastructure. Mount Warner Water District is in the process of assessing and identifying all that. I believe that the city is in the process of doing that as well and then investing on those repairs and upgrading said infrastructure. And then just more importantly is just educating the public and locals. That's where destination management comes in for the visitors. You know, drink the water out of the faucet. Don't, don't buy bottled water out of the grocery store. We have some of the best water probably in the state, if not in the country. Don't let the water run, you know, because you're on vacation, don't turn your brain off. Don't leave the water running while you're brushing your teeth or, you know, yellow, mellow if it's yellow and brown flush it down. Another thing to collaborate with all water users is incentivize ranchers to like possibly pipe their, their water. You know, a lot of water is lost through evaporation. So that's a big component of losing water. Building codes, water efficiency faucets, all that stuff, that could all be implemented to, to conserve water in our valley. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much, everyone. And I just want to commend everyone for staying within your two-minute window. And on account of this, we get a kind of a flash round and I'm going to open it up. So this is going to be, you know, so A, I want to thank all of the candidates for your willingness to step forward to service at this time. It is a tremendous contribution that you're willing to make to our community and we thank you for that. So pat on the back, we're delighted that you've taken the time to meet with us, but really thank you for stepping forward into the potential service. As I stated at the outset of this forum, you know, this is a really important and unique time to be stepping towards service. You know, the Climate Action Plan has just been adopted. The community, I think, is rising in unprecedented ways to really try to unite and collaborate around sustainability and climate action. So for this last round, which is going to allow each of the candidates up to 90 seconds. So when you hear that tone, I'm going to have you stop, full stop. 90 seconds to state what you would like for our community to know about you, to distinguish you as a council candidate at this time. So this is your chance to kind of highlight what you see as your top sustainability and climate action platform, how you want to be known. This is your candid time to connect with us. I will be queuing us in, in the reverse order of what we just went through. So Eddie, you have the pleasure of stepping up first. So Eddie, at-large candidate. And up to 90 seconds. So when the tone goes, that's your full stop. Thank you.
Michelle, can you repeat that question again?
Yeah, just this is going to be an open time up to 90 seconds. Please tell us how you want to be known, what you see as being your distinguishing platform relative to sustainability and climate action. So you've all responded to different facets of the issue. And this is your time to just kind of candidly open up to us and tell us what you want to be known for and how you want to be distinguished specifically with your sustainability and climate action platforms.
I think of what, what I'd like to be known for is just my ability to bring people together and work together. I consider myself a good leader when it comes to groups and such. And bringing everyone to the table, all the stakeholders with this sustainability, sustainability plan, action plan. Also, I feel that being a good listener and stepping back and letting the experts do the work is a very important character that, that's, that should be, you know, that should be recognized. And I just think that the CAP is a very important plan that we need to implement and get going on as soon as possible. Again, like everyone has said, Steamboat Springs City Council and Steamboat Springs should be the leader in this. But with the advisement and encouragement of Yampa Valley Sustainability Council with their guidance, I think we could get, get pretty far in, in attaining our goals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Eddie. Next, we'll move to District Three candidates, starting first with Dakota McKinley.
All right, thank you. I would say what distinguishes me is my background in sustainability and really trying to integrate myself into our local sustainable initiatives, working with local food. I have a deep, you know, passion for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And like what Eddie said, collaborating on this project, it is going to take everyone in our county to, you know, work towards these efforts and make, make some good effort. I'm sorry. I also would like to say that I'm, I'm a person who, who really cares about this community and that's the main reason I want to serve is I, I face a lot of the challenges that we're facing. I also understand that our, you know, our housing crisis and our childcare crisis affect the local workforce here. And that's, that, that's my community. So I want to bring a fresh vision and a fresh voice to, to these challenges while, while, you know, providing my background in sustainability and agriculture and local engagement. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Dakota. And next, Walter McGill.
Thank you. You know, for council on this round, I've been a council in the past, so I'm experienced with working with staff and my job as well as a land planner and a civil engineer and a land surveyor, we work with code a lot. So I think code changes that can help the community at the same time preserving our character are important. And I've stated on several of these from the entry landscaping quarter, as I've beaten in here, to transportation. And so and incentivizing development projects that can have transportation, multi-modal transportation methods that will serve the community. I think that the regional transportation is something city council should work on. We haven't really talked about that too much today. But it's in the CAP plan. And this regional transportation come in several methods. We're going to send more buses, park and ride in the South Valley is an option as well. And just these modifications even locally on some of our routing now that we have the school west of Steamboat. Can we get these people that are on the west side of Steamboat? And I think that's a big aspect of this. We talk about the Brown Ranch, but I don't always, I never want to forget the people there. They aren't constituents of Steamboat Springs, but you ask them where they live, if you live in Steamboat Two or Heritage Park or Silver Spur, everybody will tell you that's Steamboat Springs. So I think swinging the bus up to forty-two instead of turning around at KOA would go a long way in the next year to helping hold, pull the whole community together and putting that temporary road on gravel from forty-two back to downhill drive. So those are my fresh goals for the new page, the new election time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have Daniel Gurkey and the timer has been adjusted. So when you hear that tone, you do still have thirty seconds remaining. So Daniel.
All right, thank you. I think one of the things that's very important is that the Climate Action Plan understands this is a comprehensive set of issues that we're trying to deal with. And it's going to blend in with affordable housing, transportation, and other items within our community. I've been in project management for over twenty plus years at this point in my career. I've also owned successful small businesses and I know what it means to bring people together. And it is very challenging when you have people with different priorities and trying to get them on the same page and sharing a goal. So one of the things I have always been very good at is bringing people together, forming teams, and helping develop those teams so they can perform and achieve objectives by coming together and sharing a goal. You do that through constant communication, education, revising the scope, and helping people understand their roles and responsibilities. There's a lot of complex topics with a lot of different experts. None of us candidates will ever be an expert in all these fields. What we need to be expert in is policy development and being able to lead and build teams. As I mentioned, I've been doing this for over twenty years and throughout my career and my own personal life and managing people and bringing people together. So my main goal as county commit, as county, city council, excuse me, is to make sure that I'm representing the people, working with the people and making myself available. Several of you probably already seen me or my flyers because I've been knocking on doors trying to get to know you and I'll probably see you tonight when I'm knocking on doors again. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Stephen Randall.
Thank you. I have a background in geology and also a career and a master's in, in business. I'm also an avid outdoorsman. With that said, I've spent over thirty years in my, of my career in developing energy, net, gas, electricity. I'm familiar with wind and solar. I have the ability to balance that with the growth that we're looking for in our city while protecting our environment. And most of us all have the same views on what needs to be done in this city. I think if we're at DHS and what we're seeing is it is our, is our background. I'm referring to the science background, the passion for our environment, but also the view that our city does need to grow and we need to grow responsibly and we need to do that with working with the various stakeholders in this city. Our businesses, our residents, our community, and hopefully when it comes to November sixth, there's that and votes for me. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. And next, we'll move to District Two, starting first with Joella West.
We are looking at a need to change our culture if we're going to address the climate change issues and be successful in that. It's a heavy lift. I realize that I'm talking to the choir here, but there are a lot of people beyond this group who need to buy into this, even at the point of making personal sacrifices. That's where it gets hard. That is something that council cannot do by itself. No matter which of us you choose to put on council, none of us can accomplish it alone. We have to bring up the voices of the people who want to complain, who want to give us ideas. If you check out my website, joellowsforcouncil.com, you have a place to ask questions. I hope people will ask questions about conservation, about sustainability. I would like to see people talk about the Regional Transit Authority. I would like to see people re-envision what this community, which is, which is green as in full of a lot of grass and trees, what it's going to look like in five or ten years if we're going to survive. We need to get buy-in and that is what I am focused on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next, we have Blair Bacard.
Thank you. You know, I, I've campaigned on, you know, leadership, action, and resident affordability. And I think that, you know, these issues that we've been talking about this afternoon are very much, you know, beyond our border issues. But that's no excuse for not getting things rolling locally. And I think that there has been a, you know, on this and many other issues, but certainly on these issues, a, a lack of a sense of urgency. And I would like to bring more of a sense of urgency, you know, regarding, you know, carbon and water. You know, carbon is probably the most plentiful element in the universe. Water is the most plentiful compound on earth and we need to take care of these things. As an economist, I do believe in using the market to, you know, influence people in our local approach. It will take money to do a lot of these things. And, you know, I, I'm not afraid to say that, you know, we, yes, on short term rentals, things like that, let, let's go after the visitors' money first. But on this issue, this is something we all need to understand. It'll take money. We may have to pay more for water. We may have to pay more for sewer. We may have to pay more to get the things we want to get our environment in the shape we want. Thank you.
Great. And Louis Antonucci.
Yeah, well, as you know, I've already served three times on city council. And one of the things that I like to think about myself is that I've always been very successful in bringing people together to get all ideas on the table, to collaborate with all the different parties to come up with good decisions. I'm a big outdoor person between hiking, mountain bike, and skiing, backcountry skiing. I take the natural environment very seriously. I think, I think we need to figure out how to grow because certainly we are going to grow, we've been growing, and do it in a sustainable manner. I bring a lot of experience to the table. I was a big supporter of Yampa Valley Recycles when it first started years ago. We helped to fund them. A city council helped to fund them, the city, for many years. I was a supporter of them, but also with the things that they did and, and the things that you do, you've taken it another step further. I think that the whole community appreciates what you do also. So. That's what I have.
Great. Thank you very much. And finally, our District One candidates, beginning with Gil Gary.
Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here, you know, this, this afternoon. You know, as I started out my comments, you know, I am a longtime supporter of the Yampa Valley Sustainability Council. I am an, an outdoor enthusiast. We moved here over twenty years ago, my husband and I, to raise our two children in a community that values its cultural assets and its, you know, natural environment. And I think certainly one of the things that sets me apart by all means is, you know, just action. As I mentioned, you know, I volunteered at the Hard to Recycle events, right? I've staffed the zero waste stations and I certainly have even, you know, spent time digging through the trash. And, you know, in terms of working with the Organics Task Force, you know, and again, a group of dedicated community members, you know, a lot of which had very diverse reasons for why they were there. But again, we worked together and we collaborated and we were able to bring, you know, composting to this community. And I think finally, you know, with a business background, I, you know, also understand that when we set forth plans, which we have a lot of great plans in place in terms of how we're going to get to where we need to go. But we also have to hold each other accountable and we also have to provide the support and the funding that is going to be necessary to get us where we need to be in terms of solving, you know, what is the greatest crisis that I believe we face today. So again, certainly, you know, appreciate your support and, you know, absolutely look forward to working with the community going forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And David Baldinger.
Thank you. Um, I liked the lightning round and I like going last. I get the last word. That's very rare. The reason I ran for council is basically just to serve the community. And I've said that at multiple forums and it's still as true as it was the first day. I'm really proud of my community. It's my hometown. I want to leave it better than how I found it. And I think in terms of sustainability, we've got complex problems. We've got complex systems and the solutions are complex. That doesn't mean that we don't go to work on it right away, but we're all going to really have to work together and that goes to leadership. I've served on many boards and commissions for over twenty-one years in a row in a multitude of different neighborhoods and areas, mainly in planning. And I just think I bring to the table the ability to lead, to collaborate with other people and to listen and research issues. As one of the candidates says, you can't know everything, but it's your job to get yourself educated on anything that's not your strong suit. So if we're all going to be successful in attaining a sustainable future, we're going to have to make major changes to our habits and we're going to have to figure out how to pay for it. And I'd love to provide that leadership. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, thank you to all of the candidates. A, for your willingness to step forward and to service at this time. It is such an important time to do so. And secondly, for really taking time to consider how you want to advance sustainability and climate action in this community. So we encourage you to continue to learn about these issues. The community is committed to seeing action moving forward, especially at this time. So thank you very much for your thoughtful engagement and the time that you spent preparing for this. And it's really been a wonderful engagement and opportunity to talk with all of you. So as I mentioned at the outset, all of the questions that have been posed to the chat during this forum will be distributed to candidates. Additionally, those questions that were posed to the different districts and the at-large entity, those have been posed to all candidates. So I encourage candidates to respond to the questions that we send to you by email. And then we will make those responses available to registered attendees as well as publicly available on Monday. So I mentioned that the paper is here and we will probably have the, the forum will be posted live on YouTube. So it's a great opportunity to continue to do your research to see how you want to step forward as a leader for the environment and for the community in this unique Yampa Valley region that we all cherish. So thank you again for your willingness to step forward. It's a pleasure to meet you and we look forward to being in touch. Have a wonderful day.